Pledge allegiance in moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. First up, we have consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval?
Motion for approval.
Aaron.
I'll second it.
Shirley and all that approve. Yes, okay. Next, we have our financial report.
I'm gonna give you a quick overview of our September financials. The FY21 audit was completed and I will bring you the results as soon as we have our exit conference, hopefully in November. We ended September with a fund balance of $4.4 million in the general fund. And with 25% of our fiscal year complete, we ended with expenditures of $25.62. Can you hear me? I feel like I have a frog in my throat. Of our budgeted funds and have received 20% of revenue. Our SLOSS funds for the month of September was $80,000 and we ended with $2.5 million in our SLOSS funds. Could you hear me?
No, your mic's not on, or if it is, no, but I can hear you. Yeah, I'm good.
I don't have any questions. Thank you. Alright, you're up. Information.
And just a quick overview that we are on our ESSR funds. Just a reminder, we have to do a review periodically. And that has been allocated and allotted for our upgraded technology network, instructional coaches at each school, and then two payments for the HVAC that we did back in 2020. And if you don't have any questions on the ESSR review, that is where we are. That has been expended. In terms of information only, one is a policy IFCB. We're going to present IFCB as a policy for revision, so that will lay on the table for 30 days. That policy is for out-of-state travel, for field trips and events. And the revision states that competitive teams and clubs, as long as they're within 50 miles of the state line, that they may do so without BOE approval. And the purpose of that is truly to make sure that we have flexibility. For example, we have cross-country that they may get a meet added at the last minute, and that may be outside of a board meeting. We may have a football or basketball camp that's right over the line, you know, in Auburn. And so we want to make sure that we give those opportunities for our children. And those are some things that we've come up against in the past. Those teams will still seek approval of the superintendent. It will still be coordinated with transportation, it just allows flexibility.
They don't wait for us to have to okay them to go to Phoenix City, right?
Right, they don't have to wait for an okay to basically just go across the river. Just go across the river. So, yeah, that's it. So that will be on the table for 30 days and we'll formally vote on that next month. And then moving into the superintendent's report. First and foremost, I want to share that the class of 2022 had a graduation rate of 96.8%. That is the highest in school history. It is also... It is also putting us at the top 10% of Georgia high schools for graduation rate. So we're so proud of not only what that number means, but what it represents. Graduation means K-12. It takes the entire village to get to that level. It takes the village of family, it takes our parents, it takes our community, that everyone understands the importance of education. And more importantly for us, it's the outcomes of that class. So we may have had 96.8% of our kids graduating, but we have data showing the number of students that either enlisted, enrolled in college or technical school, or were employed in a meaningful career. And so for us, it's not just reaching that target, it's actually going and doing something that's going to allow you to meet our mission, which is being a productive contributor to society. So we're very excited about that and thank everyone, because again, all of this happened because we all worked together. So 96.8%, so congratulations. And I think a great example of what gets us ready for graduation rate at such a high level is the level of involvement of our students truly learning. Not just taking a test and moving on, but actually truly learning and applying that learning to real life. So tonight, I'm gonna have some of our teachers talk to us with some of their students about our STEM focus. Our STEM focus is science, technology, engineering, and math. And that encompasses many of our classrooms, our content areas, and it's across-the-board K-12. And with that, it's allowing our students to gain greater insight into problem solving, which allows them to be productive contributors of society. So we have Ms. Molly Stefan, who is our instructional technology specialist. And we also have Ms. Karen Bowen, who is one of our teachers, but she also focuses on competitive robotics and science club. And Ms. Anderson is also with her. They team partner on these events together. And again, it's very important for us to showcase really the way that kids are learning. Some of us are so accustomed to spelling tests and multiplication tests that we know that learning is very different nowadays. And we're excited for our kids to showcase what they're doing.
So hello, good evening. I'm gonna invite some of my students up here to help me talk about some of the things we are doing at the elementary school. So Mr. Michael Turner, can you come up please? And Ms. McKenna Grease? Or Ms. McKenna Jasper, I'm sorry. So the first thing for the elementary school is the Georgia Agriculture STEM Challenge that the students are in. And Mr. Michael's gonna share the three things that the students are designing to help conserve water and improve garden spaces.
We're designing three different projects. Our models, some would say, but we have three of them. The terracotta pot, the drip, the water bottle drip concept, and the mini greenhouse.
The students are also, all of the fifth grade are designing 3D prints. So they're learning how to work with the Tinkercad, which is the design software. And they are designing prints that solve problems. So one of the things that Michael designed here, can you hold this up please? This right here is for the water bottle drip. So he designed this part here that connects kind of like a water spigot. And he completely designed it himself in Tinkercad. And this next thing, McKenna, can you hold it up really high? This is for the terracotta pot. So the water disperses through the terracotta pot, but she designed a lid with a 3D printer so that the water does not evaporate, it goes, all the water goes to the plants. So these are some of the things that the students are designing.
Hi, I'm Mrs. Anderson. This year, we are... This year, we hosted a Science Olympiad Club. And so one of the things that we did in there was my students created their own instruments. During that class, tonight, we only have two guitars here, but we had, which are amazing, but we also had drums built, we had flutes built, we had, what are the other instruments? Oh yeah, like some, like a shaking, I don't even know what instrument it would be comparable to, but it was like a shaking one with all different tones. Oh, like maracas, yes, I couldn't think of the word, sorry. But we have tonight Bristol and Juliette, sorry, I haven't lost my train of thought. Bristol and Juliette, and they're gonna play their guitars for you.
You think we decided this, she's gonna go first?
Oh, she's gonna go first.
So show me family, hey, I'll be blue, I will flee. I don't know where I belong, I don't know where I went wrong, but I can write a song. I belong, you belong, you're my sweetheart. I belong, you, you belong, you're my sweet.
Alright, so our next project that we're gonna be working on with them is we're gonna make like little cars that are gonna race down the hallway. So watch out when you walk by, because you might fall. Thank you.
Thank you, students and our teachers. One reason that this, that STEM is so, so important, and I just want to share, because, you know, we think, well, they've made some fun projects, or, you know, what does that do with math or science or writing? The Georgia Department of Labor shared that in Georgia alone, that in 2030, that we're gonna have a significant labor crisis specifically in logistics, energy, construction, healthcare, and technology. And they said the skills that are going to be needed are problem solving, teamwork, initiative, and creativity. So everything that we're doing with our STEM focus is preparing our students for jobs that may not even be here yet, but by the time they graduate, that they'll have to be prepared for. And so you can teach someone to code, you can teach someone the math problems, but you've got to learn some of these other skills as you're going through and be prepared. So we're very excited that our teachers are doing such a great job integrating this into the content already. This isn't anything separate that kids are doing, it's part of what was happening in class. So thank you, teachers. Thank you, teachers who are here that are already doing that in class. And for our students who are embracing the new information presented to you, those are great challenges. Next is, we always do a program report. And tonight, we are actually going to have one that was supposed to happen last month, but he was busy becoming a new dad again. So Chief Harrelson is going to speak to us about safety.
Alright. Okay, y'all hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, alright. Again, I'm Chief Harrelson, I've been the chief for the school district for about a year, a little over a year now. After those unfortunate events last year at the end of the school year in Texas, we came together as a, as a school district and spoke about how we can revamp our safety plan, revamp our normal operation in the school daily. I reached out to the principals and we all met, because I can't do it by myself. I've gotta rely on the principals, I have to rely on the faculty to make sure that our school stays secure. So we all sat down and it was a good 30-minute roasting session, felt like, of me. But we were able to come together and create a good plan. I am in the current process of updating our district-wide safety plan. We did create IDs for the faculty this year, which at every entrance in our school, we have a access control. That way, we, we have a one-point access in our school system. The only way that outside, the public and students can access our school during normal school operations is the front door. Any, any other door will, sorry, I'm trying to, any other door will be locked during the school, during school day. We are working on IDs for our students, which hopefully will be able to roll out after January 1, which will allow parents to track students on buses. When the, when the kids get on the bus, they'll scan their IDs. And, and when they get off, they'll, they'll re-scan them to let, you know, let y'all know that, where they are at. So you could get on an app and say, hey, my kid's at Broad Street, you know, and Well Street right now. And we're doing these IDs for the students, for buses, for our cafeteria lines. And the biggest thing that I want them for is reunification. In the event that we have to evacuate the school, we have a easy process to make sure we are, we keep, where we're up to date with our roster and we know where our kids are at and we can scan an ID and say, well, he's at a reunification site. We're missing this student. Or when parents come to the reunification sites to pick them up, we can easily check them out. We also have some teachers at the elementary school and we are, hopefully we'll add it to the high school in the coming year. We are coming out with an app. It's called Panther, I believe it's called Panther Up is what we're going with.
Panther Protect?
Panther Protect, something. Where students can download this app to their phones and they can report any type of, any crime has been committed, a rumor that they hear, a mental health situation that they're going through or their friends are going through, and it will be reported to me. And that way, I can relay it to the principals or our social worker. So we can get students, the students and services that they need to help them. I work close with our social worker. We're constantly doing home visits, constantly checking on kids, making sure their welfare is good at home. That way, they can, you know, provide, that way, we can provide them the correct sources and they can excel at school. And the biggest news I'm excited about is we added a new SRO last week. And that, that's gonna help, help the school district out a lot. That way, we will have a police officer at each school during the entire school day. And that's all I got.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's, safety is the greatest priority for us in terms of making sure that we can have those educational outcomes. You need to be able to send your kids to school every day and not have worries about what's going to happen. So that does not only include our physical safety, such as protection, like our officers, but it's also our environment. And so it gives me great pleasure to first say that this past Monday was National Custodial Maintenance Day, Appreciation Day. And for us, we know that that safety begins when you walk in the building, that we have clean, healthy, happy buildings to come to. And so I'd like to take a moment, and our chat co-team, they are represented by KBS, but they are part of our family. Some of them are here this evening. And for us to just do a huge thank you, because again, it starts first that they come to an environment that's safe and happy and healthy. So Rory, Jack, Rick, Ms. Cat, is that who's all back there? We just want to publicly say how much we appreciate the work that you all do and what you have brought our schools to. They are absolutely a shining light for our community and it starts with you guys. So we will move on to our student and employee recognitions and we'll start with the elementary school.
Good evening. And I must say, it is homecoming week and today was Character Day, so that explains my M and M shirt. But it gives me pleasure tonight to stand before you and present our Student of the Month and our Employee of the Month. These students have worked really hard and I am so proud to present them with their award tonight. And we will start with our youngest Student of the Month. Marco Rondal Aguado in 3K. And Marco's teacher, Ms. Richards, had this to share. Marco is an all-around great student. He is well-mannered, always paying attention, gives me 100% every day. And he is so very kind to his peers. I love his willingness to explore and try new things in our class setting. Marco is such a joy to teach. Congratulations, Marco. And our kindergarten Student of the Month is Cameron Cochran. I don't think Cameron is with us, but I will just share that his teacher says that he is doing an amazing job in kindergarten and that he follows directions and always tries his best and always does it with a positive attitude. So congratulations to Cameron. Our first grade Student of the Month is Elizabeth Karadine. Elizabeth's teacher has this to say. Elizabeth is a well-mannered student. She goes above and beyond to reach her goals. She never complains about anything and is always willing to help others. She has sailed, has excelled in extra math, she puts forth effort into her work, and is always so nice and neat. She always takes two to three AR tests daily and passes them with 100%. She often volunteers to help clean up the classroom. She puts enormous effort into everything that she does and I am so very proud. Congratulations, Elizabeth. Our second grade Student of the Month is Lila Wilson. And Lila's teacher had this to share. Lila always puts 100% effort into her work and her learning. She is kind to others and tries to help out whenever or wherever she is needed. She is always so very respectful towards her teachers, as well as her peers, and does a great job every single day. Congratulations, Lila. And our third grade Student of the Month is Kayden Guay. And Kayden is not with us tonight, he is at baseball practice, but I will share what his teachers had to say about him. Kayden has been such a huge help with helping others this year. He's always the first student to volunteer to help students that might be struggling or that just need a little assistance. He always gets his work completed and turned in on time. And he's always the first one that would rather take a challenge than the easy way out. We appreciate all of his hard work. Congratulations, Kayden. And our fourth grade Student of the Month is Adam Marion. And Adam's teachers have this to say about him. Adam always walks into the classroom ready to learn and with a positive attitude. He never gives up and is always willing to give support to his peers when needed. He is always so very kind and well-mannered and we appreciate having him in our classroom. Congratulations, Adam. And our fifth grade Student of the Month is Michael Turner. And Michael's teachers have this to say about him. Michael was nominated because he is a role model for his peers and a great joy to have in the classroom. He is always eager to learn and grow, and this is evident from his voluntary participation each and every day. Michael always puts forth 100% effort each day in everything that he does. When he makes mistakes, he strives to correct them and grow from them. Michael is kind to everyone and he never fails to say please or thank you, or even when it is a thank you for receiving a piece of paperwork. He's always using his manners. His kindness shines through in his interactions with his peers, not only in class, but through his sportsmanship on the kickball field during recess as well. I am thankful to be working with Michael this school year. And truly, he is an easy choice as a student deserving of the Student of the Month for fifth grade. Congratulations, Michael. And last but certainly not least, I would like to present our Employee of the Month, Ms. Kelly Newman. And don't cry. I know, she's a bucket of tears lately. But I will say this about Ms. Newman, new to our chat co-family, but you wouldn't be able to tell. She does such an amazing job in our special education department each and every day. She's always has a positive attitude, a smile on her face, and works hard, gives 200% each and every day. We call her our cleaning Nazi because she's gonna make sure that classroom is spotless, but she also makes sure to take very good care of our babies. And we appreciate you, Ms. Newman, for all that you do each and every day. And I'll be the first to say in that classroom, you have been the glue to hold it together and we appreciate you so much, Ms. Newman. Thank you so much. And this concludes our elementary presentations. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. We will start with our Staff Member of the Month. And sadly, she couldn't be here tonight, she's a little bit under the weather. She had to drive back home to, or to where her grandbaby lives in North Carolina over the weekend. I think she picked up whatever he had, she went there to take care of him. Our Staff Member of the Month is Ms. Kimberly Rembert. We are so, so blessed and fortunate to have Ms. Rembert, being the first face or voice you greet anytime you call our school or come up here to visit us. I actually had another lady up there working with Ms. Rembert this past week. And she, that, that was Ms. Elaine McGlaughn. She come to me after school and she said, I just have to tell you, I have never seen anyone like Ms. Rembert. She said she is so kind and so helpful. She said she troubleshoots so many problems for your teachers because someone will call up to the school and they're upset. And by the time they get off the phone, they're happy and telling her how much they love this place. That's a true talent and a gift, and it's something that really, really helps us. Ms. Rembert, if you're listening, I hope you're getting feeling better and thank you. Alright, our sixth grade Student of the Month, I do not believe is here, we've got a few kids under the weather right now, is Casey Wright, Casey Wright. Casey Wright. Casey's teacher says she has taken the sixth grade by storm. She works tirelessly in the classroom and the teacher says they're always able to count on her to blow them away with her answers. She says one of her favorite pastimes is to read, the teacher says, one of her favorite pastimes is to read Casey's comments on Achieve 3000. So, congratulations, Casey. Our seventh grade student of the month is Carter Owens. Carter Owens. Carter's teacher just knew that she had to nominate Carter. She says that he has grown academically and socially, is prepared for class every day and excited to learn. Carter is patient, caring, and kind to his classmates. Keep it up, Carter. Our eighth grade student of the month is Kamaya Brown. Kamaya is a quiet force in the classroom. I love that description, a quiet force. She exemplifies the one heartbeat spirit by completing assignments with integrity. She also is a great example of a student who knows how to study and is helpful with showing strategies for her peers. I would like to say that she's a student that, that, that I really appreciate because she has the ability to calm down other students. When they're upset about something, that is a great trait to have, specifically in a middle school. So, thank you, Kamaya. Our ninth grade student of the month is Kenneth Wright. Kenneth's teacher writes that he is an outstanding student in the classroom, a good citizen and peer, and always participates in classroom discussions. So, congratulations, Kenneth. Our tenth grade student of the month is Anaya Crutcher. Anaya's teacher says that she has worked hard in algebra, not only to complete her work, but to truly gain an understanding of the concepts presented. Anaya is focused in class and asks questions for clarifications. She's improved in her math understanding and reasoning and continues to strive for the best. She is a privilege to have at Chatco, so thank you. Student of the month is Mr. William Lopez. William has quickly become an extremely valuable work-based learning student. William is a quick learner and willing to take on new tasks when asked of him. He is also a sweet and dependable student. William hugs his younger sister goodbye when he walks her to the middle school hallway each morning. There is no doubt that William is going to be successful in life and we are fortunate to have him here at Chatco. Congratulations, Anaya. And our 12th grade student of the month is Jared Gunn. Jared, he's part of our road bus work-based learning program. He's at work right now, so he can't be here. But Jared has been doing a great job, both in his schoolwork and his work outside of school. He has an excellent reputation at Magnolia Manor, his work-based learning job site, and he has shown leadership in his CNA class and has been helpful to his peers. Has a very professional attitude towards faculty and shows great promise for the future. So, congratulations.
Congratulations to all of our students. And we will be taking a break in just a brief moment in case you want to get pictures and then before our action items, if you would like to leave, of course you may, because we know it's a late evening. Before we go to the next item, I do want to just remind everyone that we are hosting Homecoming Game Friday. So, that is against our big rivals next door and that is our Homecoming Game Friday night. We will be recognizing our teachers and Support Staff of the Year on the field. We will be naming our District Person of the Year. And then, of course, we'll have our Homecoming Game. But, we will also be hosting our first-ever Homecoming Parade. So, one of the benefits about being in a small town with a big heart, is what we say, is that we have access to a very safe, easy downtown area, one street, no red lights, no traffic. And we are going to take advantage of that and we are going to have a real Homecoming Parade. Our ladies that are on the court are going to be able to come through and be presented. Our teams are going to be able to come through and get cheered. Our band is going to lead the processional and just get that Panther pride going. And our grand marshals will be our two Teachers of the Year and Support Staff of the Year. So, we are very excited about having a Homecoming Parade. So, we encourage everyone to come out to Broad Street. There's lots of places to stand, from the board office to the Old White Store, to the library, to even the courthouse, lots of sidewalk areas. So, please come out and support your Panthers as we get ready for Friday night. Thursday. Thursday at six o'clock. And then finishing up our report information is the oath of office for our additional school police. So, we are very excited to have an additional support on campus to support our police department. Mr. Robert Cooper.
Y'all don't look at his badge on his chest. Got to swear him in first. All right. This is Robert Cooper. He worked previously with the school district and went to the sheriff's office. Now, he's back here and he will be back, will both be back and forth between each school. All right, you ready? All right, raise your hand. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Robert Cooper.
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
Do you solemnly swear or affirm?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the State of Georgia?
The Constitution of the State of Georgia.
And all local laws of Chattahoochee County, Georgia?
And all local laws of Chattahoochee County, Georgia.
To the best of my ability without prejudice?
To the best of my ability without prejudice.
I will bear true faith and allegiance?
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
And take this obligation freely without mental reservation?
And take this obligation freely without mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion?
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will, and well, I will well and faithfully discharge?
I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties of a police officer on which I'm about to enter?
The duties of a police officer on which I'm about to enter.
So, help me God.
So, help me God.
All right.
As he is signing, we felt it was very important for that to be at our board meeting publicly because, again, as you send your children to school every day, you know your teachers, you know your administrators, but we also want you to know the faces of the people, as you heard, who take a solemn oath to protect your children. We will take a five-minute break for those who want to get any pictures or if you would like to go ahead and leave. Again, you are welcome to stay for the agenda items on the action items. They are quick, but we also understand it's a school night and we look forward to hopefully seeing many of you Thursday night at the Homecoming Parade and Friday night at our Homecoming Game. And children, go home and get ready for those Spirit Day costumes tomorrow.